Good evening, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the blessings you've given each and every one of us here in the city of Troy and throughout the world. We ask that you continue to bless us and provide us your strength and wisdom and guidance as we move through tonight's agenda here in the city of Troy. Also, be with our first responders, first and frontline responders, whether that's the police and fire, EMS, our DPW workers, and all who put their safety ahead of others to keep our city running smoothly and well. Please be with those who need you tonight, Lord, especially those who may not be able to ask for your assistance, but you know who they are and you know what support they need. Again, please be with all the residents of the city of Troy, no matter what faith they follow, know that everyone needs some spiritual guidance and support at times. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll officially call the August 7th, 2023 Troy City Council meeting to order and ask Ms. Dixon for the roll call.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Here.
Councilmember Eric Singal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
All present this evening, before we jump into the agenda, I have two resolutions for rule waivers relating to the agenda itself, so I'll start with the first one. It's a resolution to waive City Council Rule Number 4A meeting agendas. Be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby waives City Council Rule Number 4A regular meeting agendas in order to add Item C1 Legislative Update, State Senator Stephanie Chang, to the August 7th, 2023 regular meeting agenda.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Eric Singal, that we approve the resolution to waive City Council Rule 4A meeting agendas as it relates to Item C1 as read into the record. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Singal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll have one more resolution to waive City Council Rule 4A meeting agendas, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby waives City Council Rule of Procedure Rule Number 4A regular meeting agendas in order to add an item to the August 7th, 2023 regular meeting agenda, which is a request for close session at I3, subject to the late submission.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Eric Singal, that we approve the second resolution to waive City Council Rule Number 4A meeting agendas as read into the record and printed as a late submittal. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Singal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, motion carries. So those two items have been added to our public agenda this evening, so that takes us on to certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one this evening. C1 is a legislative update from State Senator Stephanie Chang. Good evening, Senator.
Good evening. It's good to be here. I'm Stephanie Chang. I'm a state senator for Senate District 3, which does include Precinct 30 of Troy. So it's good to be here. It's been a very busy year in the Michigan Legislature, as you probably know, and I'm sure you've been getting legislative updates from all of the various legislators who represent Troy, but did just want to highlight a couple of things and just remind folks that I'm here and available and want to be of service. As you all know, we did pass the budget, was signed into law last Monday by our governor, Gretchen Whitmer. Includes a lot of really historic investments in many, many items, an increase in revenue sharing, which I'm sure folks really appreciate, but you know, talking about infrastructure, whether it's roads, bridges, roads, bridges, water, et cetera, historic investments in housing, in workforce development, in environmental remediation, lots of really innovative programs, and of course, a lot of items that you all are very interested in locally. And so, just really proud of the fact that we passed this budget on time with a lot of really historic investments in our communities in a way that we haven't seen in years past, so eager to make sure that continues. And then, just recently, we, as you probably know, a number of us had legislation to help implement Proposal 2, which voters did pass overwhelmingly with support last November to change our election laws, but we realized that we really needed to make sure to update our election code to make sure that we're actually providing specificity to our clerks, to our municipalities, to make sure that there's clarity when it comes to the drop boxes, the early voting, what kinds of photo ID are now acceptable, all of these different kinds of things. And so, those did pass out of the legislature in June and were signed by our governor a couple of weeks ago, and stay tuned for more. There's more unrelated to Proposal 2, but other election changes that we are considering in the legislature that I'm excited to be a part of. And then, one other big package that I did want to highlight was climate. Obviously, we're in the midst of, well, not today, but generally a pretty hot summer. We've seen, of course, the wildfires in our own state and Canada, flooding, et cetera, the storms, the power outages, all of these things that we're all very familiar with. And we all know that climate change is very much happening and something that we need to address, so I'm really proud of the work that the Senate is doing to really put forward a number of bills related to codifying the My Healthy Climate Plan that the governor proposed last year, so that it can not just be a plan, but something that we can actually put into law, so that we are increasing our renewable energy standard, you know, pursuing the clean fuels standard, really moving forward on energy efficiency, providing more support to residents who want to weatherize their homes, and just the list goes on. There's a lot that we can do. Those bills were introduced in April, and we expect that to be a big priority in the fall. So if you have thoughts, as you see that, you know, in process in the legislature, definitely would love to hear from you. And then, just in terms of things that I've been working on, did have a bill in the Prop 2 package, also really excited that a bipartisan package that I have been leading for five years, related to sexual assault prevention, did finally pass through both chambers and get signed into law. Some of you may or may not know, but in Michigan, it was actually a misdemeanor to cohabitate. It was illegal for an unmarried man and woman to live together loudly and lasciviously. So that is just an example of a law that was, been on the books since the 1930s, and we finally got rid of that. Worked with your, well, some of your state representative, Sharon McDonald, on our bill to make January 30th Fred Korematsu Day, as a way to really make sure that we're honoring and celebrating and educating about Asian American history, and in particular, this civil rights hero. The municipal ID bill related to voter ID, making sure that we're encompassing all different kinds of ID that are available. I know Troy does not have one, but there are some cities and counties in Michigan that do have them, want to make sure that they're counted as voter ID, as well as all forms of student ID. And then, another bill related to education and collective bargaining. So, many more things that we're working on, but those are a couple of highlights. I'll also just share, for anyone watching online, or folks here in the audience, how to reach our office. Our district office number is 313-922-6949, and then our website is senatorsevelnychang.com, which is where you can sign up for email updates or send us a message through the website. We do have coffee hours, usually twice a month, and then other town halls and community events throughout the year. So, thank you for all of your public service. I know that the hard work gets done at the local level, so thank you, and just really wanted to be here, listen in, and remind folks that I'm here and eager to be of service.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you.
Any questions for Senator Chang, from Council Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Thank you, Mayor. Senator Chang, thank you for being here today. It's great, great to hear from you. Something that was in the governor's, in the proposed budget, I'm not sure, I'm presuming it passed, and I'm thinking of it because we have a resident here who's sitting, and you actually raised it to me, and it was around helping municipalities with electrification of their fleets, and just wondering, did that make it? And what would it look like for municipalities to take advantage of those resources that were, that were in the proposed budget, assuming it did get into the final one?
That's a great question. There was a lot of money throughout, sprinkled in throughout the budget around electrification. I cannot remember specifically around municipalities, but I know there was for a lot of different areas, but I will double check. Maybe he might not answer, but if not, I will double check and hopefully get you an answer today. Other questions?
Anyone else?
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have no carryover items this evening. We move on to public hearings. We do have one this evening. E1 is a public hearing for street vacation request, SVJPLN 2023-001, request to vacate an unconstructed alley approximately 18 feet wide by 115 feet long, west of John R. and south of Larchwood, abutting PIN 88-20-26-433-021, 1980 Larchwood to the west, PIN 88-20-26-433-020 to the south, and PIN 88-20-26-433-019 to the east, platted as part of John R. Gardens subdivision, located between Lot 259 to the west and Lot 65 through 70 to the east, in Section 26. It'll be introduced by our Community Development Director, Brent Savidon. Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, City Council. Nice to see you again. Just waiting for the PowerPoint to load here. If any of you woke up this morning hoping to be presented a deep dive into street vacations, you've hit the jackpot. Congratulations. We're going to learn a lot about street vacations. I'm hoping it would come up on this screen here, so I don't have to crane my neck the whole presentation. Well, we can, can everyone see these? I can't very well, but we'll, we'll press on.
Hold on.
Okay. Perfect. So Mark asked me to start off with a description this evening of just what is a street vacation. It's not something that we see very often. I'll get into it in a little bit, but the golden age of street vacations is in the 60s and 70s and 80s. So, so what is a street vacation? If we're going to talk about street vacations, we first have to talk about the Land Division Act, which was formerly known as the Subdivision Act, Subdivision Control Act, or the Subdivision Act, or the Platte Act. And if you've ever heard the term "platte" before, what a platte is, it's a, it's a site plan for a, for a subdivision. What the Land Division Act does is it regulates how land in Michigan, Michigan is subdivided or separated into two or more parcels, and it regulates how subdivisions are developed and amended. And, city, it's better to look at the one, the screen to the left or to the right, because there we go. It's fixed. As we all know, we were incorporated as a city in 1955, and we really boomed, from a population standpoint, beginning in the 60s through the 90s. And when all the population was, was, when Troy was growing population-wise, most of the people who moved here, who resided here, lived in single-family homes in subdivisions. This is taken off our GIS, the green lines are the boundaries of subdivisions, and this is just a random screenshot of many of the hundreds of subdivisions that are located throughout the city of Troy. Just as there are rules for these multifamily, one-family home development subdivisions, just as there are rules on how subdivisions are created and approved under the Land Division Act, there's also rules for how streets are vacated. Sometimes, when a, when a platte or a site plan for a subdivision is approved, there are rights of way that are approved but never developed. These are called paper streets. So they're on, they're, they're streets on paper, but they were never constructed. So a street vacation occurs when the city transfers its interest in a right-of-way to a private owner, or multiple owners. And a right-of-way can be a public street, designed for private cars, obviously, a public walkway, or a public alleyway. An alley is, provides secondary access to properties. In this case, this evening, we're going to be talking about an alleyway. So the street vacation process begins with, with an application. It's reviewed by staff internally through our BSNA program. They provide comments. We, once we have all the comments, we prepare a report. We have a Planning Commission public hearing. The Planning Commission considers the item, makes a recommendation to City Council. City Council has a public hearing, and if it's approved, the property's ultimately, that right-of-way property is ultimately conveyed to the private owners. It's a similar process to a rezoning, insofar as there's multiple public hearings, and the Planning Commission serves as a recommending body. In terms of ownership, if you look at the slide, you see this street here? This is from the same, and I'm going to talk about the history of the subdivision. This street, at one time, was a paper street that went straight south, and it was vacated. And, so this, the, the street was, was on 25 feet of, both sides of, 25 feet both sides of this, this line here, and when this street was vacated, the ownership, 25 feet went to this guy and 25 feet went to this guy. So it's, it's, the, the ownership, once it's vacated, reverts to the owners of the property on both sides of the right-of-way, within the platte, within the subdivision. So in terms of issues to consider for these vacations, every vacation is different, so this is, these, these issues are considered on a case-by-case basis. So these issues include, is the land proposed for vacation currently in use by the city? Does the city have a need for the right-of-way in the future? Are private utilities affected by the vacation? Is it in the city's best interest to keep the right-of-way? Is there a need to retain easements? Will the granting of the vacation have an adverse effect on surrounding property owners? And will vacation have an adverse effect on the utilization of the abutting property? These are questions that are applied to each and every vacation on a case-by-case basis. So, this brings us to the vacation requests we're discussing this evening. You can see in the aerial that we're discussing, and the arrow points to the, the area under consideration. It's 18 feet wide, it's 115 feet deep, so it's right here. And the property owner of this is kind of encumbered by this vacation. This is, this prop, this alleyway is owned by the city, even though it's never been developed. And it is in a, located within a subdivision called John R. Gardens subdivision. This is the Kroger fuel station, and I'll get into this in a little, a little bit here, but this is what is proposed for this property, and that alleyway is, would be about here. So it would actually potentially affect the location of the Kroger fuel station. That was approved by the Planning Commission in late June of this year, and the Planning Commission conditioned approval of the Kroger fuel station on the vacation of that 18 by 115-foot alley. Now, when, when I started to unravel this application and do a bit of a deep dive, there's a history here that I think is really interesting. This subdivision, so it's, it's bounded by Maple to the south, John R. to the east. This subdivision was, John R. Gardens subdivision was approved in 1923, 100 years ago, at the time it was zoned R1E, one-family residential. There were 583 lots created in 1923, and the lots ranged from 20-foot wide to 40-foot in width. Not, these are not very big lots. By 1968, so over 45 years later, the city decided to study this subdivision because in 45 years, only 55 lots out of 583 were developed, so less than 10% were developed. And they heard people complain consistently that they were too small, too, too narrow, not desirable to be developed, and many of the streets were not constructed for this reason. So, they initiated a rezoning. This is a city that initiated a rezoning. Now, this portion here had been zoned office, and this had, right here, had been zoned B1, local business, but the rest was R1E. So this is taken out of the file. That portion zoned R1E was proposed to be rezoned to light industrial M1. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing, September 10th, 1968. Over 150 people attended, 27 people spoke, 15 in favor, 12 opposed, and the Planning Commission voted 6-3 in favor of the, of this rezoning. Then went to City Council, October 28th, 1968. Council approved it 4 to 2, and then, again, this is from the file, and then you see how the, the zoning changed from R1E to M1 light industrial. If you go there today, you'll notice there are still some homes, some holdover homes from that, but I found that history really, really fascinating. So what, what effect did this have on development and land use? The slide to the, to the left is, the aerial is from 1964, and you can see it's mostly, mostly undeveloped with about 50 homes. And then, 30-some years later, by 2000, you see, on the right, you see all these large industrial buildings and, and the development that occurred. So it, it seems to have been a pretty successful effort on, on the behalf of the city to, to change the development pattern of this, of the pattern of this rezoning. And then, here's, here's what's occurred in terms of street vacation since 1968. That's the subdivision that I showed earlier, and everything in yellow are streets and alleyways that have been vacated since 1968. And you see the blue arrow here? This alleyway that goes from the top of the subdivision all the way to the bottom of the subdivision, there's only one piece that has not been vacated, and it's 115 feet long by 18 feet, and it's the piece we're talking about this evening. So there's, there's been a history here that, that we weren't a part of, but I think, I think this, this kind of deep dive gives, gives everyone a little bit of a background, because I know most of you probably visited the site, saw the homes, and saw the pattern, and this, I tried to provide a brief explanation of how we got to where we are today. So here we are again, with, the Kroger fuel station was a special use that was approved by the Planning Commission, June 27th of this year, conditional on vacating the alleyway. So it has been approved, condition, conditional on, on action by City Council. This is a rendering showing the, the proposed Kroger gas station, and the street, the street, the street to be vacated is right about here with that, you see that car? Here's an aerial view, showing the location of it, in the context of the undeveloped parcel. Here's a plan view of it. So, I read over the issues to consider. I won't, I won't read them again, but the answer to every one of those questions, beginning with, is the land proposed for vacation currently in, in use by the city? No. The answer to every one of those standards that we, that we consider was no. So it seemed appropriate to the Planning Commission that the alleyway be vacated. And they held a public hearing on the 27th of June and recommended approval of the vacation 9-0. And with that, Mayor Baker, I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you for the deep dive into the history and the process, although I think that's not only fascinating, but it might even be helpful. So thank you very much. Any questions from council? I know some were asked already. Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think I heard in the Planning Commission meeting that the, the utility easement, just kind of behind it at the end, that comes with it, right?
It's, that would be a different, a different easement altogether.
Oh, it is? Okay, I thought it kind of came with it. Okay. And they were notified, I think we had heard also in the Planning Commission meeting.
Yes.
Utilities, and they have no need for that. Okay.
Right.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
Another question. I was deep diving into this and went out there. Something I learned is if you had two different zonings on each side, or two different owners, and it was approved to vacate that alleyway, it would have to be split between the two zones, or split between the two property owners, and it goes down the middle. But in this case, we have one property owner, we have one zoning, so it's pretty straightforward. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, okay.
I don't think there's any other questions, so I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't see anybody signed up to speak on E1 regarding the street vacation request, but that doesn't prohibit anyone from coming forward now if they feel so inclined. I know we did receive an email, it was on our desk in the Yellow Sheet, from a family who lives in the area.
I can't do the chair.
You may come forward, absolutely. I've just...
Matt Pitsko at the Kroger Company, I'll sign in. I can't top that exciting presentation. And I have a red laser, so just so you guys know, I wish I had a green one. All the answers have been spoken.
Mr. Savidon?
Mr. Savidon answered everything that I could have possibly thought to, to speak about, so we appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm glad to answer it, so.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else for public comment in this public hearing? There's not many people here this evening. City staff doesn't want to come, that's a bad, all right, then, with that, I'm going to go and close the public hearing, and I'll ask for someone to bring the resolution to the table for discussion and consideration. Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll move E1 Public Hearing for Street Vacation Request, SVJPLN 2023-001, request to vacate an unconstructed alley approximately 18 feet wide by 115 feet long, west of John R. and south of Larchwood, abutting PIN 88-20-26-433-021, 1980 Larchwood to the west, PIN 88-20-26-433-020 to the south, and PIN 88-20-26-433-019 to the east, platted as part of John R. Gardens subdivision, located between Lot 259 to the west and Lots 65 through 70 to the east, in Section 26, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve E1 Public Hearing for Street Vacation Request, SVJPLN 2023-001, request to vacate an unconstructed alley approximately 18 feet wide by 115 feet long, west of John R. and south of Larchwood, abutting PIN 88-20-26-433-021, 1980 Larchwood to the west, PIN 88-20-26-433-020 to the south, and PIN 88-20-26-433-019 to the east, platted as part of John R. Gardens subdivision, located between Lot 259 to the west and Lot 65 through 70 to the east, in Section 26, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Yeah, happy to share some thoughts. So I, I just really dug into this for some reason and really gravitated towards wanting to understand the, the dynamics of it and went out there. One question I would ask, but I know this evening, this is about the, the street vacation, not so much about the, what's planned and proposed there, but there's a part of me that wonders, you know, do we need another gas station there? If you look down the street, if you're standing there, there's another gas station just down the road that you can see. But as I spent time with this and understand the purpose of a street vacation, and understanding the legal ramifications and, and basis, which we just, we heard those standards presented, and I'm grateful to Director Savidon for presenting those, that this is an alleyway that the city is not using, it doesn't plan to use, there's no utility obstruction or need, a future need or current need, and so recognizing that whatever is planned for this, this, this future lot, and of course, it being zoned IB, it would be really neat to see something like multifamily residential there, but knowing that, at the end of the day, that there is no case to be able to really deny moving forward with vacating it, because again, every other alleyway has been vacated in that space, and the city has not been using it and will not use it, that I know I have to support that, that purpose with it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa. That was well said. I'm just going to add to that quickly, because it's right there. If it had this come to us, I'm fully supportive of it, for all the reasons you just stated. But had it come to us separately, without any reference of what was actually being built there, I think we have nothing to even say about it, and I understand that, you know, there's been, there was some good discussion at the Planning Commission meetings about this with the residential neighbors and also some of the industrial neighbors, and I know that there was some correspondence done as well, and so I, I'm absolutely comfortable supporting the street vacation based on the reasons that are before us, regardless of what's going to happen there. As it relates to what's going to happen there, not our role here to talk about that, but I, I'm comforted in knowing that you're continuing to have conversations with the abutting properties relating to buffers and landscaping and all of that, and I think that's ultimately what's important to, to the neighborhood around there. So, thank you. Any other discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Kringa?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Singal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker? Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes public hearings this evening. We move on to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have two people signed up this evening, two people that have spoken before, so I don't need to remind too much about the rules.
Those, the two people signed up are for L1?
My apologies. Can't be perfect all the time, city clerk. Thank you. Never mind. All right, so there's no one signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, so there's no need for reply. We have no postponed items this evening. We'll move on to regular business. I1 is board and committee appointments. I have no mayoral appointments this evening, and there are no city council appointments. So move on to I2, board and committee nominations. I do have one mayoral nomination this evening. Let me just read everything properly here. To the local development finance authority, LDFA, I'll nominate Resident Fabrice Schmuelauskas as a resident member for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Support.
I want to erase the support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hoderek, that we approve the nomination of Fabrice Schmuelauskas to the LDFA for the term expiring 6/30/2024. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes mayoral nominations this evening. Next up are city council nominations. My understanding is we do have one this evening.
I do.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the renomination of David Hight and Ann Sakerson to the personnel board for the terms both expiring April 30th, 2026.
Support. Moved by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve the nominations to the personnel board of David Hight and Ann Sakerson for the terms expiring April 30th, 2026. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other? That concludes city council nominations to board and committees this evening. Next up is I3. We do have a request for closed session. Be it resolved that Troy city council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268A.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve I3 request for closed session as read into the record and submitted as a late submittal. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will, at the conclusion of our public agenda here, we will recess and then pick up for the closed session in the council boardroom. And it's expected that we will then adjourn the entire meeting from in there. Next up is I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System. That'll be introduced by our city attorney, Lori Gregvleum.
Thank you, Mayor. This actually was before you at your last meeting, and this is a proposed amendment to change the structure of the employees' retirement system. There will be additional amendments that will come to you at a later date, but this basically just reduces the size. It's an appropriate time since our DB members are declining in the city, and so it's an appropriate time to downsize that board and still, again, give everybody an opportunity to have a voice at that board. There are also some other provisions that are proposed for elimination that were drafted and specific to situations that are no longer applicable. So we do recommend that you approve these amendments. And again, we will be bringing additional amendments to you should you approve this tonight.
Thank you, City Attorney Bloom. Any questions from council on I4? Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Abraham?
I'll move I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal, that we approve I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will, at the conclusion of our public agenda here, we will recess and then pick up for the closed session in the council boardroom. And it's expected that we will then adjourn the entire meeting from in there. Next up is I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System. That'll be introduced by our city attorney, Lori Gregvleum.
Thank you, Mayor. This actually was before you at your last meeting, and this is a proposed amendment to change the structure of the employees' retirement system. There will be additional amendments that will come to you at a later date, but this basically just reduces the size. It's an appropriate time since our DB members are declining in the city, and so it's an appropriate time to downsize that board and still, again, give everybody an opportunity to have a voice at that board. There are also some other provisions that are proposed for elimination that were drafted and specific to situations that are no longer applicable. So we do recommend that you approve these amendments. And again, we will be bringing additional amendments to you should you approve this tonight.
Thank you, City Attorney Bloom. Any questions from council on I4? Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Abraham?
I'll move I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal, that we approve I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other? That concludes mayoral nominations this evening. Next up is I4, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Troy Ordinances: Employees Retirement System. That'll be introduced by our recreation director, Brian Gould.
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you is for replacement of the Aquatic Center pool boilers. It is recommended that the bid process be waived and a contract be rewarded to Limbach Inc., Pontiac, Michigan, for an estimated cost of $199,304 with a 10% contingency. This purchase requires a budget amendment to the Aquatic Center Capital Fund in the amount of $19,240 to cover the 10% contingency amount. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell us, what is the average life of a boiler, of these boilers that we're purchasing?
Well, these we have, the ones we have right now are between 10 and 15 years old. And I would expect the next ones would probably last about that long. The ones that are currently there were repaired earlier this summer because they went out by Limbach, and they got them, did some temporary repairs to hopefully get them through the summer. They made it this far, so hopefully we'll get through the last few weeks. But they are in major need. We would not be able to run them again next year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move I4, Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Extended Purchasing Contract Aquatic Center Boiler Replacements. That'll be introduced by our recreation director, Brian Gould.
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you is for replacement of the Aquatic Center pool boilers. It is recommended that the bid process be waived and a contract be rewarded to Limbach Inc., Pontiac, Michigan, for an estimated cost of $199,304 with a 10% contingency. This purchase requires a budget amendment to the Aquatic Center Capital Fund in the amount of $19,240 to cover the 10% contingency amount. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell us, what is the average life of a boiler, of these boilers that we're purchasing?
Well, these we have, the ones we have right now are between 10 and 15 years old. And I would expect the next ones would probably last about that long. The ones that are currently there were repaired earlier this summer because they went out by Limbach, and they got them, did some temporary repairs to hopefully get them through the summer. They made it this far, so hopefully we'll get through the last few weeks. But they are in major need. We would not be able to run them again next year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move I4, Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Extended Purchasing Contract Aquatic Center Boiler Replacements. That'll be introduced by our recreation director, Brian Gould.
Thank you, Mayor. At your last meeting, you authorized travel to MML for council members, and at this point, only councilwoman, Ann Erickson-Galt, I believe, and...
I'll be going too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll be going too.
Well, more people. Okay. So, well, that's good, because we had a slight quandary, because Rebecca Chamberlain-Krengga happens to be on the MML board, and I don't think it's technically wrong for her to be our voting delegate, but it's probably not the right thing to do. So you're here to assign who the actual delegate or alternate to vote at the MML meeting when it's upcoming. And I also want to remind those council members who have not contacted Bath for your reservations and registration, please do that as soon as possible so we can get the early bird rates.
Sure.
So you have to choose a delegate and an alternate if they need them to vote at the MML conference.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
May I make a comment, mayor? To Mark's response. General counsel of the league did recommend it is not a good idea for me to serve in this position, so I open up to my colleagues.
Well, I did some unofficial polling before the meeting, right before the meeting started. I think Councilmember Brooks is for sure going, at least as of right now. Councilmember Eric Sangal and Hamilton are also planning on going.
Like 90%.
Right. We need to appoint a delegate and an alternate. So are you more than 90%?
I'd be happy to serve as the alternative. Or does, I mean, Dave, do you want to serve as... I've done it before, so... I have to, so it's fine either way.
Oh, okay. I think you all have at this point. Three years ago.
Okay, that's fine, I will. And if something changes, can we change or no? That's why we have the alternate.
That's the alternate.
That's true.
All right. Okay. Well, I'll move I4, 2023 Appointment of Voting Delegate and Alternate to the Michigan Municipal League. Be it resolved that Troy city council hereby appoints Councilmember Teresa Brooks to be the voting delegate and Councilmember Ann Erickson-Galt to be the alternate for the Michigan Municipal League 2023 Annual Meeting being held at 4:30 PM on Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, in Governor's Hall A at the Grand Traverse Resort and Spa, Traverse City, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, that we approve I4, 2023 Appointment of Voting Delegate and Alternate to the Michigan Municipal League as just read into the record. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
And thanks as well to Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga, Councilmember Hamilton, for bringing this up at the last council meeting. At that time, there seemed to be a consensus that today, after receiving feedback from City Manager Miller, which you've now received, that you would move ahead with scheduling a study session to discuss whether and how to move forward with creating a city sustainability committee. So, I would like to ask you, could you please now proceed to schedule this study session as you had discussed? A number of residents who are politically active are waiting for you to move on this, and we refuse to be put off any longer on this, or we refuse to wait for, for example, the advance to discuss this further. Can we please move forward with this now? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dale Marish.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to talk about bicycle safety and etiquette. Assuming I can get my computer back up, the printer's not working at home. Thank you for that chance to speak. Recent events have prompted this speech. This bicycling season, three times, I've been honked at by annoyed drivers. One even shouted, "Get on the sidewalk!" You probably know that bicycles belong in the street and on the roads, just like motorcycles and other vehicles. Bicyclists are vulnerable road users just like pedestrians, but they rarely belong on the sidewalk and should always yield to pedestrians. Children probably belong on the sidewalk when they're learning to ride under parent's supervision. Our neighborhood had no sidewalks, so people were used to seeing both pedestrians and bicycles in the street. Bikes on the sidewalk have more frequent hazards to avoid as a rider. Every driveway's a danger from a car backing down the driveway. If the drivers check the sidewalk at all, they're looking for slow-moving pedestrians and not faster-moving bicycles. At street corners, the bikes must again watch out for cars in the street. Bicyclists should ride responsibly and not run red lights or run stop signs. I often treat stop signs like yield signs if there are no cars. When bicycles and pedestrians mix it up on the sidewalk, the pedestrians often get hurt. One college student got hit by a bicycle at Purdue and had to be airlifted to the hospital in Indianapolis, 60 miles away, with a severe head injury. I don't remember if she was okay, but the incident made the campus newspaper. At Purdue, the curb cuts on campus all had no bikes stenciled on them. Some sophomoric students had modified, many of them to say "No nukes." One of those near the Nuclear Engineering Building was modified to say "More nukes, less kooks." That was 100 years ago when I was there. The other day, I was nearly hit head-on by a car cutting the corner on his left turn from Square Lake Road to Beach Road as I was turning right from Beach to Square Lake. So, I was surprised to see him coming at me, but he saw me and dodged. Maybe I'll start making, taking the sidewalk on the north side of Square Lake for that half-mile since there are no driveways. Square Lake has a generous shoulder and fresh asphalt, so I tend to ride on it. But many other mile roads in Troy are unsuitable for bicyclists, Big Beaver in particular. Bikes should always yield to pedestrians, however. The overwhelming majority of motorists are polite to bicycles. These three were the exception. Let's treat each other with kindness and not rudeness. Finally, the punchline. I could lead a group seeking to update the bicycle route signs if the council agrees. There are at least a couple signs that should be changed that I know about personally, and I haven't, like, ridden around the whole area to see what they look like, but I can do that. I have a lot of bicycle experience, 7,500 miles and two summers in Europe, the Palm Ride and other organized rides. I guess I'm done.
That's your time, Mr. Marish. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let me know if you're interested, guys.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy Residents and Businesses. Now's an opportunity for city council and city administration to respond or reply. I'm actually going to start, if I could, just for a second. To Fabrice, I appreciate you coming forward, again, with your passion and your information. Senator was right, you probably had a little more information related to the budget, so thank you for that. I actually, I was expecting to see a date this evening or a proposal for a sustainability study session, and it didn't make the agenda, so I'm hoping it'll be on the next agenda so that we can plan that and notify the public as necessary. That's kind of where I thought we agreed last meeting, that would happen. Again, appreciate you coming forward and keeping the conversation going from that perspective. Mr. Marish, also, I want to thank you for the bicycle safety stuff. Ironically, I got two emails today from residents talking about bike lanes and bike safety. I know there was a bike, an accident regarding a child on a bike in a major intersection last week. It's definitely top of mind for a lot of people, and I share a lot of concerns about the bikability of our city and the struggles we face in trying to make it more bike-friendly due to the nature of what exists. Doesn't mean we shouldn't try, so appreciate you coming forward and bringing that message forward, and I don't know the answer about bicycle route signs and what needs to be adjusted, if anything, what department that falls under, but I expect that city management can check into that if necessary. Additional comments or reply? Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, I was going to mention during the comments about the sustainability meeting, but I don't think I'm, I think I may be on a plane for the next council meeting, but I mean, I'm really open to whatever times. If it's on the next agenda, I'll let it known what I'm available for. I think I'm pretty available besides the MML conference. I can do anything for the next few months, so let's get that scheduled by the next meeting. That's what I'm hoping. That's in the agenda. Or I'll, if one of us could move it as a referral too, if it's not on the agenda as well, so.
If necessary, sure. Yeah. Okay. Additional reply? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Thank you, Mayor, and me three. Fabrice, thank you for stepping forward. I actually, I gave a heads-up to Mark. I wanted to bring up again around that Department of Energy, the block grant through the county to get an update. So, our last meeting with the public heard was we were perhaps not going to pursue it, but then, as we dug into it, we're grateful to hear that we are going to pursue it. And again, very, very grateful to Erin Quittell from the county for offering, sharing the opportunity and offering their support. I'm really grateful for that. And just like you, Fabrice, when Mark had mentioned, you know, the possibilities, and he shared a whole list of what we could do, and when the possibility was around a consultant to help us with a sustainability plan, I thought, wow, we need a sustainability committee because you need the public input to be a part of your planning, to be truly inclusive, and to make sure you're reflecting your community. And to get to that point, we need our study session, so I'm eager to move forward on that and definitely look forward to doing that soon. Other thing going to Mr. Dale Marish, and a question from Mark Miller, are we in charge? Because I know those bike signs, I live not far from some bike routes. Are those something the city takes care of when we're on the routes, or is that, are those county signs?
No, we have bike route signs, yes.
There are, okay, that's great.